Call be ordered, we start with the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order, roll call starting on my right.
Councilperson Josh Aaron.
Councilperson Brad Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Trey Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Alton.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? I can add though.
No, I'm just gonna hit the sheet.
No. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Looking for approval of the council meeting minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. We'll be looking for approval of the minutes of the council workshop of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that also carries. Now we'll also look for the approval of the minutes of the street tour of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Looking for approval. Do we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Fixes the financing budget, you'll have the council table in front of you with the additional listing, if there's any questions, please direct them to Finance Director Carl.
What was all the streetlight stuff that we had on there? That's in the second of the tables.
For.
There was a ten thousand one for streetlight stuff, did we have to replace a couple or what was that for?
For both electric?
Uh, no, let me look at what we have on.
Was that for all the LED bulbs or something?
Oh, that could be. Is it, uh, let's see. Let's see it. Look at both of these out. Should've brought it up. Street lighting, people's cooperative utilities, it's on the second table list, ten thousand one hundred forty-nine.
That's probably.
Just the electric, just regular bill?
That's our regular.
That is the electric, okay, I didn't notice.
Yes, for all of the different places.
I didn't notice something new or whatever, 'cause I knew he brought up these. Fiddling with two lights.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those biggest motions in general business, the first item is a public hearing for the Bear Cave Estates final plat. Okay, the public hearing will be to consider the final plat for Bear Cave Estates. I'm going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Correct? City engineer overnight review letter is attached, law office corresponds from Elsie County, recommend line up Eleventh Avenue Northwest intersection, this is scheduled for two thousand twenty-five. As you may recall, the city ran the improvement project utilizing the assessment process and a public hearing will be held later this fall for that, a development agreement will be signed with Alan Begichio prior to releasing the final plat for signatures. Planning commission review the plat at the June twenty-seventh meeting and we welcome him into the room. So, the hearing is open. Bill, do you have anything you want to add to it? Uh, you want to add some questions, Holson?
Yeah, available for questions, just wanna say maybe a couple of words. The only difference from a preliminary plat and from the beginning, uh, when we looked at this before, we're told, is we have, uh, same number of lots, we've made a little bit of an arrangement here for some lot lines, and we showed a thirty-foot easement, a drainage easement here, it's also, uh, going to be added as a utility easement. So the utility companies can use that alongside the road. That was the only substantial the company's review, what you guys have, uh, that's the only change from what you already have. So otherwise, um, just quickly on the, um, schedule. They thought they were gonna get all the rock in this week, but they got washed out, and they'll probably get washed out again tomorrow, so he's saying next week they'll finish the rock. Maybe the end of next week or the week after, then we get the curb in, and another one to two weeks to get the blacktop in. So, three to four weeks they'll be done and, uh, I'll read business. Everything is done on the, on the underground, except about the last hundred and fifty feet up here by, uh, county road is still, uh, yet to be done, but they want to get this tuned up before they finish that last piece. Otherwise, they're, they're there.
Is that gonna, I was curious about this and I as the road goes in, Coria or whatever they call it, is that gonna empty or is that gonna open up onto the county road as well at some point, or not, or is it gonna get that out for now, or?
The GDP for the whole area has this road curving over. Future road that does come out to Eleventh Avenue. And not Eleventh Avenue.
Yeah, Tenth Street, I can see that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, whatever. So it'll curve over and meet up with it further down?
Right, this will curve over to the west through the, the second.
Go across Tenth Street and go north to the other, where they develop on the north side?
Yeah. Or to the left, and then this road comes down and goes out this way. That's what's on the GDP right now, of course, that could change depending on how the things to the west lay out, but the idea is that this will go through in the future.
If I have another question, I can look at it, but you're right here, so I'll just ask. How many lots is it again, how many double, how many are single?
Uh, there's, there's, well, there's eighteen lots, so that's nine complexes.
Okay.
And then there's twelve single. Yep, and it's a, um, it's a I wrote it down, so I couldn't forget. It's a planned residential development, so it's, it's not like a, a straight plat, it's a, um, it's, it's the way that you have in your ordinance to do like a performance residential, what used to be called a, uh, planned urban development, PUD, different things like that, and it's based on, uh, instead of, um, like a R-one or R-two where you have, uh, setbacks and densities, this is based on pretty much the density. So if you're required to have, um, you can't have more than forty-five percent of the, of the project covered by structures, and we're only at like twenty-two percent, so there's, there's extra green space and extra rec space over what's required in the ordinance. So it was, we just did it that way to, to get the, the frontages and the setup, the way it's gonna look from the street, still a public street, still individual lots, but it's set up as a, uh, an association.
Cool. Thanks, Bill, any other questions from the table? This is a public hearing, any questions from the public? Everything you reviewed is fine, Jenna?
Yep, just comments, they're from the county and myself and it's all over the county project, so.
No comments from the public, any, any rip come in? Sure.
No.
No? Alright. No questions here, so I'm gonna close this public hearing, open the regular meeting back up. So what we need to do here is the council, the action requested is to approve the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash a resolution approving Bear Cave Estates final plat, subject to the city engineers' review letters. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Keep going, uh. Next day of public hearing again, it's gonna be a property cleanup. Three oh six Second Street Southeast. Okay. Then close the regular meeting again, open the public hearing. After failed attempts by the city to mow and clean up the property, there was a May second letter, a letter was sent out on May twenty-sixth, notifying Paramount Investment to do to the non-compliance, a public hearing would be held, is anyone from Paramount here today? So that can be given the opportunity to be heard, to present evidence on the matter prior to city ordering the abatement. Pursuant to city code section six-ten dot zero-seven sub-two, the city council will consider the above described nuisance. The public hearing is here up going to be heard on this matter and to present any evidence or arguments you believe the city should consider regarding the ordinance violations. So, Paramount's not here. So based on, based on the following finding of facts, the city council hereby orders the abatement of the nuisance and will enter upon the property to remove the offending items. Finding of facts are listed here. An accumulation of refuse and miscellaneous debris on the property along with the overgrowth of scrub trees have been allowed to accumulate and is currently present in plain view of the premises. That accumulation of such refuse and miscellaneous debris along with the overgrowth of scrub trees on the premise of three oh six Second Street Southeast is in violation of the city ordinance sections six-hundred-point-zero-five, six-ten-point-zero-one, six-ten-point-zero-two, six-ten-point-zero-four, six-ten-point-zero-five, and six-seventy-five-point-zero-one. It's in a lot of violations there. Photographs documented accumulation, accumulation of suffer issues, miscellaneous debris along with the overgrowth of scrub trees is such quantities as to reasonably annoy, injure, or endanger the safety, health, morals, comfort of the public. That accumulation of such refuse and debris along with the overgrowth is in such quantity as to be indecent or offensive to the senses and obstruction to the use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable and general life of property and the public. It shall be the responsibility of the property owner to pay all the costs of said abamements, including attorney's fees, administrative costs which will be assessed to the property and be paid with your property taxes. We have copy of the letter in front of you, both letters and pictures. It is offensive, we have made the neighbors put up with this long enough. It is time that something is done.
Is anybody actually living there right now?
No, um, property's been looking like this for a number of years and probably a year ago, um, the occupant left and then and hasn't done anything like this, so.
And you have a, and I see you've sent two letters, but we've got no reason, I mean, there's not even a
No, and I made a phone call and the secretary says, oh yeah, they'll, they'll get to it, they'll call you back and, and nothing from them, so.
I haven't. Sure that I made no.
Anyone from the public gonna speak to this? Anything regular?
No.
Opposed to public hearing? So, council action requested is to call for the abatement of all this refuse and miscellaneous debris and clean this property up.
So we'll, we'll go in and just remove everything?
I'm sorry, what?
We'll, we'll end up hiring someone to go in, clean it all up?
Yep.
Continue, I see we've already voted, obviously, just probably in today or yesterday. And then
And then we'll build them and then they won't pay and then we'll assess it to the property.
Assess it to the property.
The only thing we can do is replace that window.
You know what, it's just embarrassing that you even have to go through that, I mean, there's supposedly a reputable company, I mean, their name's all over the place. That's kinda sad.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll probably second that.
Do we have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Alright, next one is a variance request, two oh one Glouella Place Northeast, it'll be a fence. Planning commission held a public hearing on June seventh, consider variance that would allow for a privacy fence to be placed four-point-five feet from the property line inside of the applicant's proposing that the side fence be a six-foot privacy fence with the rear east side being chain link. Orders requires that fences be placed fifteen feet from the property line that'll bust a s- side street in order not to create a visual issue and to continue with the harmony and aesthetics of the residential neighborhood. The property to the north isn't developed yet, but the house would face Second Avenue Northeast and could sit as close as six feet to the adjoining property line. To complicate this a little, prior staff mistakenly approved the new home permit and the side yard setback of twenty feet wasn't followed, which would make the setback of fif- which would make the fifteen-foot setback unreasonable. Staff's recommendation was to line the fence up with the rear corner of the garage showing with the red dot. The applicant is hoping to get as much use of the backyard as possible. The gradient of the backyard replaced with a shed. Planning commission felt the question reasonable. We have the drawing in front of you. Are you putting a gate big enough to drive through, is that why you want where it is?
No, so actually, the way you see your yard here, I showed, I took a picture of it, we have such a steep gradient in the backyard that where they mark where we would have to put the, the fence, it would be like through the steep gradient, so we really wouldn't be able to utilize much of our yard at all because the gradient doesn't stop until we meet the shed. The only really walkable land would be where we have it fenced in way down here. Um, so in order to at least have some flat area on top of the hill there, we would put it right there, and we've already, we're gonna put this in professionally, we're not gonna do it ourselves. Um, and we've already had all the utilities marked out, we know where everything is, and we're gonna stay far clear of everything.
So if you go from the corner of your garage down right on the top of that hill, is there any reason you don't, you wouldn't use chain link for the entire thing so as to not have any possibility of blocking any visibility?
So, the reason we wanted to do privacy is because we do, there's a lot of people that park on that road, and just for like peace in the neighborhood, we do have a dog and she will bark at anything that moves, and we've already had neighbors say, hey, can you make sure your dog doesn't bark? So, in order to make our neighbors happy, you know, just so she can't see people walking up and down at all hours, um, and we just wanna be able to use our land without, you know, a ton of people like seeing in. Um, I would say that, yeah, that, that's our reasoning for wanting to do that.
Where'd you take that picture, except sure he's not can't get that, uh, looking at girl lips?
Oh yeah, no, and we have marked just 'cause it is pretty, it's pretty steep back there.
Can you see those?
Absolutely, yeah.
Josh, what, of the
It's good, they have the retaining wall there too, so I remember that line would go through, it would be like that, we have the retain.
We have a huge retaining wall as well, so this is where it would run, it's right through that slope there, we have everything marked out, so we know everything, we know the measurements from the sidewalk, um, sorry, I can kinda pass them along too, this is the road there, um, retaining wall.
So the one from the back corner of your garage, it just winds up with your house, how many, how many feet back are you from the sidewalk at that point? It's only, it is four and a half, that's how close your house is to the sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly, and so just to be able to have a strip where we can walk on flat land, that's where we would put it, and enough to have a gate so we can like walk through and put our, push a lot more like through into the front yard. Um, sorry, here. Yeah, so, um, this is our, this is the gradient there. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, my new piece of all these. So this is the gradient there. Yeah, and then we'll walk through the ones that I took later where we stayed everything. So, uh, this is the back corner of our house. So the, the fence would go through the retaining wall, which you can't punch through, but still like that, it's very near, so.
Well, do we have these pictures for a second, you can say that.
Oh, absolutely.
One of the, I don't remember if Josh, if somebody were on, we've had this question before in another part of town. Which we denied, because it's too close to it. Exactly the same setup, it was a corner.
There's one nearby house like that, I think it was on A Street.
It was the corner lot and the house next door was their side yard on this house. But the next house, it was their front yard, is it backed out? You know, it was a six-foot high fence.
Yeah.
That's, I'm sure that's, part of the reason why you asked why it wasn't chain link on that side.
Correct, that's exactly why.
Yeah.
So I mean, you're opening a not that we haven't opened cans of worms before, but you're opening quite a can of worm here.
Yeah, 'cause I think the one that we denied before was technically eight oh one Third Avenue Southeast with the corner of A Street and Third, and they wanted to be between the boulevard trees and the sidewalk and we wouldn't allow it, we said come back behind the boulevard tree. A little bit different in the fact that the, the different, the only thing I'm seeing different is the gradient, it'd be pretty weird to put a have your retaining wall and then put a fence inside the retaining wall, um. Be honest, you got a unique setup for sure, um. I'm a little hesitant on a six-foot, I mean, what, a six-foot privacy fence on top of that retaining wall, it's pretty high from the backyard.
We can do five, I mean, we are very flexible, it's more that we just want our dog to not be able to see through. She
So your dog's like the neighborhood pain in the butt?
I mean, she's a pelvic dog and she loves to bark at everything, she's very like prey driven, loves to chase squirrels and birds, so she'll bark at anything that moves.
Correct. I would just advise against being in the utility easement, just because there are utilities there, doesn't mean it's not for extension of utilities in the future.
You do understand that, you are.
We did speak about that as well, and the way that we, um, I think, it's kinda hard to see from the picture we took, but we were going to stay far clear of that, um, transformer as well. We're actually gonna
It's not just transformer, there's easement all the way through.
Yeah, so gas mains, power mains, everything needs to run within that utility easement, and they need that ten feet in the future, so you will have to move the fence.
Yep.
They'll move it forward if you don't.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's, that's not a question, even if you approve it.
They, I mean.
Correct, yeah.
You need to understand that too, we, we don't need to come back here, hey, this could even hurt my fence office, that's what we do.
Or any future property owners, if you happen to sell, would need to know that it is their expense that they have to move the fence when land, neighborhood is developed.
Yeah. That's completely fair to us, if we need to move it a little bit.
And Josh, you said you guys were okay with it?
Yeah, I think it was four to one or five to one.
So I tend to, I tend to try to agree with you guys as committee most of the time, and you respect what you're saying, but I so I, I generally, I would be for this, I'd, I'd probably prefer it to be a little bit shorter, a five-foot fence rather than six, but I, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't, it's like I'm an engineer and I know the difference in my head right now, but, um. I it would have to be, I would like it to be very, very, very clear, everything that we just said, all the disclosure, that you guys need to know that your, your role on the dice, if you get approved on it, and when it happens that they suddenly, when it feels like it's not gonna be developed for ten years and suddenly it happens in two, and your fence, it needs to be torn down, you're gonna be really ticked off. And then you just gotta brush your teeth and look at yourselves in the mirror and calm down, I think, and then bring it on, on anybody else, but that's my feeling, and I know I supposedly should make a motion before we discuss anything.
Well, I don't know, I got the, the whole thing about it is, is if it was two side yards, that's one thing, but we, you're basing the front yard and the side yard on the next, the next house is the front yard, we got orders about parking stuff too close to the curb even, next door neighbor for the front yard.
These guys, it's their side yard.
Yeah.
It's their side yard, it's the next person that builds their front yard.
No, I, I get that too, um, I do get it, but.
I think that when you were talking about the first one, I was was voted down, I think the house is already there, so you, you can't move a house, in this, in this case.
We voted that one down more so because you couldn't see, when you were approaching the, the intersection,
The intersection.
It blocked, or you couldn't see the intersection, it was a non-control, it was like a yield sign intersection. So you couldn't see traffic, and I mean, it, it was egregious. This one at least is not on it, I don't think the road's gonna, this road will be developed further north, it's not gonna turn behind that.
Far enough back.
So, and for that matter, I, I don't think it would be an issue. It could be, depending on where the next house is built, but hopefully they can plot it out, they see where it's at before they do it. How far back is, is it gonna go, I mean, is it just gonna go to the back of your shed or all, or?
Yeah, just to our property line, which really is not far off from that shed at all, like our shed is pretty much on the back corner of our lot.
Well, regardless, we gotta make, move one way or the other. I, you guys have heard my comment on it, and I don't care which way it goes, but I, I will make a motion to approve it, a five-foot fence, with all the stipulations that we said as far as knowing that it's gotta be disclosure, very clear that it's in that utility. Um, I, I think it's probably if it's approved tonight, it's gonna end up being, being reversed, I would think at some point, but when that is, I don't know. Certainly that's, if we, if we get a, if we would have a motion, I think they can open discussion if you guys all need to discuss.
Rick, you ready to say?
I'm just not sure with the easement, the whole easement issue with the utilities.
So just so you were aware, there's a lot of fences that are in the easement, and we just, on the building permit, put out there that if the fence needs to be removed due to a utility issue, the, the utility company doesn't pay for it, and it doesn't, they will take it down with the property owner, so. I wouldn't, do you know, just not now.
For your guys' sake, have you looked at the chain link with the slats to prevent the vision issue that you were talking about, so that if it ever in the future came up, you could possibly just pull those slats out or get the cover that goes on the fencing, just to save you from having
Would save us money too, it's just a matter of what would look nicest, I mean, it's a really nice neighborhood and we want it to look nice, like we, this is my first home, like I really want it to look good, so.
I won't say this, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Generally, most development areas that I've come across in Rochester, working on that, they're, they're happy to have the cover, or chain link, then, 'cause people have different privacy fences, and that's what gets all wonky and ugly. Yeah, 'cause most people, the upkeep's crazy and then not everybody matches them, and chain link, if it's, as far as the neighborhood looking good, it's always everybody agrees and does the same thing. I don't think you guys have any kind of common sense up there to say that, it's all gonna be the same.
What was your motion again, Greg?
My motion is to approve it now, um, with the, our discussion with Jenna, that they need to know that, obviously, it's, he's gonna, I mean, it doesn't matter if they know it or not, because the, the utility company will do what they gotta do. Um, but we, knowing that it has to be disclosed to the next homeowner if he gets removed, and knowing obviously that it, it very well could be headed, but I, I, I tend to, yeah, I'm tending to want it for
You make a five foot too.
On five foot, you know, you're, I would like, I would prefer it to be a little less.
So are you a five-foot variance or a five-foot?
No, five foot and high, just seems really high above everything, I mean, I don't know if it does it at first, but the way it grates down, it just
Okay, yeah.
You got a motion on table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
It's gonna be a split one here or something.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Alright, so.
Motion carries.
Yep, motion carries. You can say if you want, or you don't have.
No, actually, you have to say to the whole, you just said the rest of us.
You should've put that. You should've put that shit on there.
Sorry, so on Thursday, I can issue the permit, and then you can put the fence up after that.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
So if you can come in sometime on Thursday. Actually, I have some election training Thursday morning, so maybe after ten-thirty.
Okay, I do record.
Otherwise Friday, and we're here till five, otherwise Friday.
I mean, it's only Thursday.
Alright, next one's another variance request. Variance separation between structures, two nineteen Fourth Avenue Southeast. Planning commission held a public hearing on June seventh, consider five-foot variance for required ten-foot separation for accessory structure per section thirteen-seventy-five dot zero-five, development requirements. Thank you, this variance is needed as the applicant wants to add a ten-by-twelve shed adhered to the three-foot side and rear yard setbacks. Planning commission has recommended approval.
Man, looking at this on the map, it's like cramming the shed right, it's gonna be tight, but I, I wish I had a shed, so.
But they're moving it closer to their old structure. Start to tomorrow. So.
Public hearing? No, I was saying the public hearing, they already had the hearing.
Consider five-foot variance for required ten-foot front, so in, okay, I'd like that, Josh, you could maybe explain it a little bit.
Why they gotta, what's the difference?
Moving closer to, from where to what?
He's moving, he's got a covered
Deck.
Deck, so he's gonna, it's supposed to be ten feet apart, he's, and the way the property is, he can't have a ten feet.
So there'd be five feet from the corner of the deck to the corner of the shed, is what it's showing there.
Then he doesn't need to get a
The corner of the shed and the corner of the deck
Five feet.
Will be the two closest.
Five feet, yeah, yeah, I see that here, 'cause nowhere else is it that close.
And like, Josh was trying to explain, he's leaving that three-foot side and rear property line for the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, that's actually probably, uh, more favorable than trying to squeeze it up in the corner of the property.
Like you said, your garage is close, actually closer, right?
Garage looks like it's really close to that alley.
I can step from the house to the garage.
Jesus.
Without jumping.
And well, I know you're pretty fleet to foot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that funny though, when you look at the lot and the house is setback so far and then all the rest of the living happens on half the lot, the shed, the garage?
It's not even a full lot, it's a half a lot, so he just cramped anyway, getting in there.
Well, I don't, I don't see a problem with that either, personally, it's his. I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve. Any other questions or discussion?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Get to the building, Jeff. Next.
Tire project?
Oxidation ditch cover, wastewater treatment plant, approve the contract for plans and specs. Acceptance of study of the oxidation ditch cover repair and order plans. At the May 23 meeting, you were given a report from SEH regarding the oxidation ditch cover at the wastewater treatment plant, that was showing signs of significant deterioration. SEH structural engineer Ben Wolf examined the covers, determined that it is in disrepair. The engineers have discussed with public work staff to discuss possible ways to fix it. Different options were looked into, including removal of the cover and replacement of the catwalk. However, after talking with the manufacturer, it was determined that it is in the best interest of the system that the mixer area of the oxidation ditch be covered, ditch cover be removed and replaced. Staff assess, has met since May 23rd and I recommend entering into a contract with SEH for reattached contractor. Right, you gonna approve, perusing the contract?
Mm-hmm.
It's absolutely gonna have to go through this place though, because it comes up every day.
Yep, you need to. Maybe we should hold this off till you tour, we get your opinion on it.
Why is my toilet flushing out of the fire?
So, since you checked the whole contract though, you won't know what you're telling me. To approve contract for plans and specs for replacement of the oxidation ditch cover, that is what we have to consider. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Huh?
I have a question.
Go ahead, ask Jeff.
A few years ago, when we redid the plan, did we run into problems with, was it SEH engineer or was it another engineer? That we had a fight with over at the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, and they've replaced her, replaced him with a different engineer, a very nicely young lady, and Jenna also, as our city engineer, who sees everything.
Okay.
So they don't, they don't get away with nothing. Jenna make sure that.
That, that person's not, not in office of the city.
Okay. Is Jenna gonna make sure there's no issues in the end? I have to make a motion.
I will be here through every step of it. I can't promise anything, but I will definitely work through whatever we come across.
You make the motion to approve the contract for plans and specs?
Yep.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will also carry. Next is resolution approving election judges. It's time to approve our election judges for the upcoming primary on August 9th and the general election November 8th. We have the list of judges in front of us. Which are good citizens. The head judges will be Laurel Jacobson, Sheriff Raider. Confess requests to approve the resolution 2022 to issue resolution approving election judges for the 2022 elections. I have a question.
Yes.
Do they use these same judges for the special election?
Yeah, so typically for a primary, the primary election, our voter turnout is very low, like 20% maybe. Um, so we only use about four election judges, but because of the school referendum, having it on August 9th, 9th versus during the general election, we're gonna have to go full staff. Uh, I don't know if, how the turnout will be, but hoping that will, will be a big turnout. Because it's, it's an important.
Does the school help with the cost of that election then? They call a special election like that or?
Um, we could ask them to, but I haven't had any discussions with them. They have it.
I just want to.
Yeah, but we are, it will cost us money because we have to go full staff.
Right.
I'm just looking at these people wondering how I'm gonna handle it if for some reason I fail to get reelected and I don't accept the, uh, if I don't accept the results and I'm gonna be have some sort of insurrection here in Spiritville.
Well, I'll let you tell you, our elections are run just perfectly. So if you don't get reelected, it won't be because of Laurel Jacobson, Sheriff Raider running the election.
The reading Craig's asking that for the citizens that are here, filings for Craig and Josh. For their seats become available July 27th through August 9th, so anyone that wants to run for those seats will be on that general election. The general.
The general election.
Yeah. I have no intention of pulling Donald Trump.
Alright. Any other questions from the table?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That will carry. First is the next, I approve a tobacco license for 308 South Main. City has received an application for Honest Liquor at their new location, 308 South Main Street, starting July 12th, 2022. So you're gonna, you figure it's unbeing opened by then?
So, it's like two months after.
Yes, it's hoping to be opened by then.
So that's like two months behind what he was hoping for.
Yes.
You're on topic, couple weeks, four hours later. Alright, city has received that application. Uh, our action is to approve his tobacco license or disapprove, subject to proper application.
In, in essence though, his already approved tobacco license, basically, that one goes away, so it's not approved at that building. If somebody else were to move in there.
No.
He basically just starts it over again at the new location, right?
Correct.
I'll move to approve that. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Jeremiah, a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is out of the general business. Now we're in the mayor staff consulting reports. The next mayor report, the city stirrers send their sympathies to the family of Shirley Raleigh, Daryl Sinclair, Jim Allen, Bob Moore, Kim Feiman, Charles Graves, Lynn Fisher, Ariad Skar, and Julie Anne Greason. Now, to mark another special occasion, we're all gonna sing Happy Birthday to Mark Peterson. It's his 65th birthday. Happy birthday, Mark.
Where's the cake?
Expect treats afterwards. Don't forget, the Military Collector Show will be held at the American Legion on Saturday, the 18th. And today is Flag Day. It takes on a little more importance today because it's just the holiday marked for our flag. In a 1917 Flag Day message, President Wilson said, "This flag, which we honor and under which we serve, is the emblem of our unity, our power, our thought, and our purpose as a nation. It has no other character than that which we give it from generation to generation. These choices are ours. It floats in majestic silence above the hosts that execute these choices, whether it be in peace or in war. And yet, though silent, it speaks to us. It speaks to us of the past, of the men and the women who went before us and of the records they wrote upon it. Let's celebrate this day of its birth, and from its birth until now, it has witnessed a great history. It's folded high on the symbol of great events, of a great plan of life worked out by a great people. And with that, I would like to also, for those of you that don't know it, thank the Morning's Lions Club. They have a flag program. If you notice when you drive through our streets and boulevards, right now, they have 1,614 people participating.
Six hundred and fourteen.
614 people.
That's awesome.
And we, or flags, I'm sorry, that's correct. There's like four of them here, so if you're. We'd like to have that many more. It's a, it's an awesome deal. Don't, they, they put it out for Memorial Day, Flag Day, Fourth of July.
They go all the way through the center and state of thirty. And it's like, I've been doing it for a couple of years and it's, it's reasonably priced.
Very reasonably priced.
It's pretty cheap. And they come and get them and they bring them. It's so cool coming home from work and now you got a flag in your area.
And there are certain areas, it's, the streets are lined.
High street, yeah.
Your street is, it's.
So that being said, if anybody wants to volunteer, there's a few people that put them up. Um, the club is very small, so anybody who just wants to hop in a truck and help set those flags, they should call Brian Bushman or they could call here to.
Right, alright. Or contact Cheryl here at City Hall. Alright, thank you. Thank you to everyone who goes up. That's all I've got. Bill?
Uh, reports in your packet. Just a interesting note, we've already increased population from the census. So the state demographic sent their estimate, another about a hundred people here, so Stewartville keeps growing. Um, then, um, Nate's already mentioned it, but the library board and their subcommittee have begun their plans and planning process, which will take a while, but, uh, they're gonna be meeting again tomorrow to, um, really dig in or start in on planning out the library expansion. And then the last thing, I will need the personnel committee, or we will need the personnel committee to meet here in the near future, because, uh, pending resignation of a current employee. So we'll have to look at reevaluating those positions and see how we wanna move forward and then what options are open for us. And then, uh, Union gave us, uh, their proposal for you to take a look at, so we'll start, um, reviewing those things.
Alright.
That should do it.
Alright, thank you, Bill. Any questions for the administration?
So do we end up, is it our responsibility to up, update populate, like, do all the cities know the demographic thing came in? Do they all update the population science accordingly or?
Yeah, state's already done ours, but, um, right now, the state did it based on the 2020 census.
So every 10 years.
Every, yeah, it's only done.
Cities have the right to do an additional one. Ratchets are unsigned company or signed shop, so they, they'll do theirs periodically more often. We have ability to do it if we want to.
Alright, thank you, Bill. That'll take us to Finance Director Carly, you got a report?
Um, don't have anything in your packet, but, um, just starting to think and look towards the 2023 budget. So keep that in mind, that we're gonna start rolling on that and if there's anything big in projects and things that we need to start looking at and planning for, let me know. Otherwise, that will kinda go in full swing in July, um, over the board on all my.
Alright. Any questions for Carly? Thank you, Carly. Sean, public work?
Report is in there. Uh, I just wanted to say the fountains at Lake Florence, the fountain and the pump. I know we've gotten calls on, we're having issues with when we're working on, we may have to replace, not the fountain, but the pump that keeps that pond full up. And I don't know if that fountain's not working because of the elevations of the water in there. So if you get calls, I know we've gotten some, one family especially has, uh, messaged us a couple of times about it and we are aware of it and we may have to get that fountain repaired. Other than that, uh, normal typical stuff and reports there.
We get stuff looking good, they're getting, keeping earning.
I'm, I'm very happy with the one true and having a full-time guy in the one true. It seems like the parks are way better shape. They're doing a great job of keeping them trimmed and sprayed around and stuff like that.
They look great. Any other questions for Sean? Alright, what the guy's saying, keep it up, they're doing great. That'll take us to, well, city engineer. Jenna, you got anything for us?
Well, we did get the final lift of pavement on, um, so hopefully everybody's liking how that worked and with these recalls, hopefully things are, um, not bubbling anymore since that panel is there. Um, other thing is, we are continuing with the design of the 2023 project. We're at about 50% plans. Um, we would like to schedule and hold the next neighborhood meeting. Um, for the past few projects, we've been meeting before final plans so that we can get input or, and make everyone aware of where we are with the design in case through discussion, design changes come up with that neighborhood. Um, so right now, looking at July 18th, so Monday. So unless there is.
You'd be far enough along with that for them?
Yes. We will be far enough along to be able to share, but not too far along where a change would, they make for a major setback.
Alright. Do you need council approval for that? Okay. Alright. That sounds good. Any other questions for Jenna?
Yes, and with that, we were going to send out letters for what was the 2022 CIP project. Just with updated numbers for them and invite them to come if they have other questions, but.
When you say numbers, which, you talking, ask the engineer's estimate on that or what?
Yeah, I, we go through the engineer's estimate and see what might be the assessment. So based off of where costs are at that time. But just want to keep people up to date of maybe what to expect for next year.
You're trying to hold a place, Andy?
Yep. But I do know that it's highly unlikely by next year, they'll be back down to where the reports set from maybe a couple of years prior here, so.
Alright, Jenna. Any other questions for Jenna? Alright, thank you. Oh, say, by the way, I really liked the looks of the way you guys did that over in Front Gruffins. Put that little, little cement.
Verge.
Yeah. I think that's gonna work out pretty good, huh?
I think the whole street there looks nice, narrow, you know, even those near it up, put the front and the sidewalks up in there.
The last thing we have is the striping and so we'll get, parking spots actually stripped in there.
We found out that since we narrowed it, it will be a problem turning oxen teams around inside there. That's why it was so wide. When the bell was there, the teams of oxen could turn there.
How, how the oxen do we turn around there these days? I didn't have that many traffic cars.
Be allowed that now?
Huh?
Be allowed that now?
When they bring flowers and stuff.
They gotta be service oxen or else they're not allowed.
Right.
Well, they can not, they can't.
Thanks, Jenna.
Yeah.
Library director Nate's not here, fire chief Vance isn't here, pool director Jake ain't here. I bet the pool is jumping the ditch.
Lights stretched all the way around the parking lot. Um, Josh, you had a pretty good handle on it.
Yeah, it was all the way back to that rear entry of the alley.
They were so full, they had to wait for some to come out.
Well, I was gonna open.
Oh, wow.
I'm glad they get in, so.
I hear that new water feature's working out quite nice. Alright, that'll take us on to committee commission board reports, chamber of congress, we have nothing in our panel tonight. EDA, HRA, our meeting.
We got something.
Yep.
Yep.
Got a little fart.
Finance?
It was last month, the minutes are in there.
Alright. Library?
Nothing.
Park board?
Um, meetings from mayor and their, they were met last night. Um, there's some interest. Uh, we had a presentation from a gentleman who's looking to find sponsorships for the holes in the, in the golf, disc golf. They had to update the baskets and the signage and stuff. And, um, he also happens to be, he's running the, the tournament at, at Summer Fest as well. Yep, so seems like he's interested in, in doing some screws and up of the, the disc golf, um, uh, course solid at Bear Cave. And then there's also, um, some interest, among other things, in, um, uh, doing some control of the buckthorn in the woods. So we looked at a couple of different options that Sean brought to the table that were, might be possibilities.
You look at the goat option?
Yes.
Price on goats.
That was actually, I think, the preferred option.
You've got a good idea.
Yeah, just him.
They need, they need a little bit of insurance.
I mean, if they're well, they're bulls. Make sure they're.
They're a good dream, yes. I don't know, when you do that, why don't you just put up like a snow fence around the area that you wanna put them, you mean, put them in there? Cause I, I just recently learned, like, within the last year, that this is a real thing that happens. And, yeah, that's, is that how it goes? And so people, you'll just pick the area, you wanna clear up and.
Yeah, they just.
If you did the entire park, he'd split it into four quadrants. Uh, and he would shuffle them for the entire summer, just keep rotating between those quadrants. Then in the winter time, they, you know, lower stuff they can eat up and clear the way, and then go in the winter time and cut the bigger trees off. And then in the spring, they get reshoots from the lower portions again, where the goats can reach it. Then he brings it back in the second, it's a three to five year, he says you need to do it three to five years to get a good process out of it.
How many do you think it would take?
Goats? He didn't really tell me. He said, as he gets more goats, he gave me a price. I don't wanna say it because it's, if, if we gotta bid it, I guess somebody else, but he gave me.
But he gave me a price. He said it couldn't get cheaper if he gets more goats than if we do a multi-year contract with them to do it.
Council, Cason?
Hey, Bill.
You feel?
Armec.
I didn't hear it, but I know what he said.
Alright, anything else here, Maya? That's all I got.
My donation.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to the meeting.
He got a donation from us.
Yep, there was a donation for, from the foundation for the skate park.
The Sturt Foundation was what, $5,000?
Yeah, $5,000.
That's the day they donated towards the skate park. Well, that was a very nice one.
And along with that, there is, um, with, they're doing donations for the skate park. There is a PayPal account that is set up. There has been stuff out on social media for that. And so that you guys can share it on Facebook and or on the city website. You can go in and get it too. That's fine.
You too. Thanks. Good deal. Personnel, we got to get a meeting set up, Sean?
Yeah, we'll send some times and dates up for the effect.
Brian Zoni?
Uh, we had the three items on our agenda tonight. We're going to have a meeting for the next one.
Alright, good. Public safety? Nothing tonight. Public works. Brady?
Our park.
Roll call?
Uh, minutes in your packet, just addressed a couple of project items and that was it.
We're getting for EVs in Minnesota?
Yeah, yeah, that was the bigger part of the meeting. Throughout the whole state, set up corridors. Obviously, the challenges are where those stations are, if people can make their commutes and then get in line to get charged and how fast the churches are, so.
I think right now, there's one that's quick trip north, correct?
Uh, here in Stewartville, yeah.
Alright. The wave town?
Big one.
Transit Advisory Committee?
No report.
No report.
Sits through an hour on a 90-degree day, just report, no report. That is dedication.
Since his airs out at home.
The council this evening. Okay, we got a couple of communications in your packet? A thank you in there, if you take a look at that. And then we have, let's see, what was it? School district tour info. So, and I'm sure they have it on their website, I imagine, the school.
Yep.
Alright, that takes us to the open mic. City welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that in comments, we must be pervert the city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes. Speakers be recognized only once. So at this time, we'll ask anyone who would like to address the council to please step up to the podium and if you'd please state your name and address. So anyone who would like to, there you go, sir, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials. My name is Peter and I reside at 1117 Peterson Court Northwest. My wife and I purchased our home and moved here 11 months ago from a small city of 11,000 residents in central New York. Just to clarify, its proximity to New York City is similar as Stewartville is to Chicago. About five hours in the galaxy away. I'd like to address the issue of a, of the, looking into a Stewartville police force. I'm sure Ms. Strain has accounted for all of the items I'm going to put forth, but I think they should be before the public. If you consider, there's currently a nationwide shortage of qualified law enforcement officers in this, in the nation and in the state of Minnesota. Including necessary qualified personnel will be critical. In order to attract appropriate personnel, higher than normal starting salaries and signing bonuses may be an issue. You'll have to poach LEOs from other police departments. When you project police officer salaries, you must budget 50 to 100% more for overtime. They have court appearances, transporting arrestees for arraignment, parade holiday coverage, training, et cetera. My former neighbor was a city police officer. His base salary was $85,000 with a duty schedule of 140 days. That left 225 days a year to garner overtime and plenty was collected. Also, you'll be outfitting officers with uniforms, including boots and jackets and full replacements every year. And another neighbor was the purchasing person for County Sheriff's Department. And they provided three summer uniforms and three winter uniforms every year, plus their equipment. There'll be expenses involved, gun range time every month, ammunition, as well as the cost of accessing to shooting range. Running a police department will also involve at least two to three civilian employees to handle dispatching, multiple paperwork involved, as well as employee time off. The cost of electronics, computing equipment and services, and communications equipment. Well, you have to construct and maintain a communications tower. When you talk about vehicles, are you including additional maintenance costs associated with high-usage vehicles? Are you going to contract with a local business or are you going to hire your own staff for these services? Vehicle replacement, it's a recurring cost every two to three years. Those vehicles arrive as shiny new cars or SUVs, but you have to incur the cost of adding decals and striping, emergency lights, sirens, pushbars, computers, radar, security cage, D-rings, et cetera. Where do you intend to house a police department? They require security, controlled access, sophisticated electronics and much more. In six months, you'll probably be looking to build, equip and furnish a police department building with a price tag of $5 to $10 million or more. What about prisoners? Olmsted County will tell you to pay $1,000 a day for housing prisoners. And you'll say, well, we'll house them in our new police department building. You just increase the cost of the new building, as well as additional trained personnel to staff the lockup facility. At some point, you may decide you want to have your own city court system to handle traffic violations, minor arrests. Great, you get to hire a judge, clerk and staff and find a place to house them. What will insurance cost to cover a police force? Given the current climate, a major liability policy will probably come with a significant premium. Not including any buildings or court system, be prepared to have a police department budget $5 million in five years. And is Stewartville prepared for that? Couple that with a tax increase from the school districts, we proposed $30 million project. Is the tax burden going to force people to move out of Stewartville? If all of these services are included in your contract with the Olmsted County Sheriff's Department, maybe it's a better bargain than you realize. And if you're unhappy with your contract, please renegotiate with them. There are a lot of sides to this issue, and there's no right and no wrong. I'm just putting forth some additional information to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input.
I thought you started that by saying you were in favor of our own city police department. And then when you went through all that, that's all the stuff that I said at our last meeting. So you're not in favor of that, obviously. Because I'm not, I've been a cop, I'm a dresser for 24 years, and I've, I've made it very clear in our workshop a couple of weeks ago. And they still want to discuss it further, and we will, because we're going to investigate everything. But I basically, you reiterated all the stuff I just said. It's a huge-
I wasn't here, so I didn't hear that.
Yeah, no, correct, and nobody was, but I, I agree. Now, as far as your statement about negotiate if you're not happy with the contract, we wish we could. But the sheriff will not. He, he, he takes a very non-professional attitude when it comes to negotiations and fails to listen to the wants and needs of our people. And that's why we got to the point where we're at right now. But I thank you for the research you did on that. You nailed it. A few of the things are a little higher, but than what I think we could do it at, but it is crazy, the thought process. In my personal opinion, being around the cops, and I've worked in the fleet area of our department and the training, and I've been in all different areas, and you've nailed it, man, trying to- Where are you going to get your graphics? What are we going to do for dispatching? What are we, who are we going to partner with? Are we going to partner with them? Are we going to have our own channel? Or are we going to be on their channel? If so, we got to play nice with that. What do we do if we do get our own holding area, tons of policies, tons of rules? Now we got to have access to food. We got to figure out how we're going to feed them. Boom, 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 boom. All I know is that if we ever go that route, I am hired to be chief and I'm not going to be part of it at all. But yeah, boy, you nailed it, man. That was very professionally done, and you really did figure it out.
Thank you. As well as one neighbor being a city police officer and the other neighbor being the county's purchasing committee for their sheriff's department. Another neighbor just retired as commander of Troop D of the New York State Police. And so I've been, and, and I've had numerous friends over the years that have been LEOs. And so I, I have an idea of what's going on. And it just, I just want to put forth that there's a lot more to it than just hiring a few people and getting some cars.
I would highly encourage you to pay attention when we have our next workshop, if we have them open. Uh, because we're gonna, they're going to work on more research. They've, there's already been a ton done, Carl's done a lot, all these guys have dug into it. I would argue that if we're already up and running, we could operate cheaper than what they're charging us in, in, in Olmsted County. And what's happening with Olmsted County is that there's advantages. If we had our own police department, we could get our, we could direct this, our cops and say, these local ordinances are of importance to us. We need you to do these. We pay a separate fee to have a community cop down here from Olmsted County. Okay, that's part of the contract. They're supposed to be that person, but for some reason, they're directed from a higher power not to listen to what the mayor wants done. That's not acceptable. That's ridiculous. And then, and I know the numbers because I'm on the same records management system as Olmsted County. I do know that it's dangerous nowadays, and that we send two cops to calls a lot more than we used to, and rightfully so. But that's part of the county's overall responsibility just in and of itself. If we said no contract and they, they threaten us, we're not going to handle any misdemeanor calls in, that's fine. But statutorily, they have to come down and serve us for gross misdemeanor and felony cases, which could be domestics, any kind of assaults and things like that. So the fact that he tries, he wants to try to keep pushing two more cops every year to the point that he wants Stewartville to fund two cops 24/7, along with a community officer on top of that. I will tell you, the average one written report a day down here, one written report. That means, that's it. Even if two cops come down here, they handle it, add notes to the call, the other cops back out, protecting the rest of the county. And when they have too much coverage here, they go out and they leave city limits and they decide to police all over the place here, which I know that draws the ire of some of my cohorts up here because we want them in the city limits. So those are some of the problems that we've had with the crazy increase. If we wouldn't have fought it last year and at the last minute, we finally got, we finally were able to agree, but it was very, uh, it was a very tense situation. And what we were told was that it was going to have to be a 40% increase on the citizens of our city for police, for our police, public safety portion of our contract, or of our budget. That's by far and large the most expensive part of our budget. We couldn't rightfully say we can't, we can't go to the citizens and say it's going up 40% in one year. And thank goodness, we didn't, because who thought Biden could have ruined everything as fast as he did? But nonetheless, I'm just kidding, that was a joke. So nonetheless, I understand there's many reasons for the high prices, don't get me wrong. But when they deny everything, it's frustrating. Bottom line is, we agreed to do 20% and 20% again, and we're going to really be looking for your guys' input down the road. All we want, we, we do like the service we get, I do. I'm going to speak for myself. I do like the service we get from Olmsted County. I do think that they're, um, once we agree next year to bring on the additional guy again, they have what I would consider to be ample staff in town, because for at least 12 hours every day, they're just in town. And then the other 12 hours, there's one, but you always have the roaming squads that are in the county to back it up. So, and then of course Rochester always went back too, if there's anything real big happening, you know, that, that's how that goes. So the main thing is, we want good public safety for everybody here in town, but we also want it to be affordable for everybody in town. It can't be outrageous, and it's got to be common sense. So hopefully, we'll reach that point that we negotiate again and another, we're good for another year yet after this year. But we'll have to negotiate, but there's going to be a lot of work to be done. And man, anybody that knows the stuff like you do, I'd love for you to be in that room too. And any of you guys, if it's something that's important to you, please pay attention, because that should be important to you, right? I mean, number one, you need to have, none of us want cops under our shoulders all the time, I don't think. But when you need them, you want them to be there, and we want them to be the most professional and treat you right and that you heard. Very important, right? But it's, so it's got to be the happy medium, so. I'm glad that people are taking it serious. I don't know if you guys are all here for that issue or not, but-
I'm supposed to tell you for a minute?
Oh, good enough.
I think you'll agree that aside from the military, Homeland Security, law enforcement agencies can suck up money faster than any other governmental agency.
Agree.
And that's why you have to be careful if you're going to set up a police force. You need to have all of your ducks in a row.
Yeah, I'm going to think 110%.
He knows.
Well, you're, you're right, and I, I'd be lying if I didn't say that I see money that's wasted at times. I mean, even us, working in the department, question whether or not, do we need to hire extra for that? Can't we shuffle things around and get it done? Let's try to keep it in check, so.
We, we came from a county of 60,000 people. They had to get an urban assault vehicle. And that'll show up when Mr. and Mrs. Jones have a domestic dispute, and that's where it's going to be used. In fact, it was so big, they can't even house it at the county facility. They house it 11 miles away in a little poked-down town of 600 people, because it's so big.
Did that drop on taxpayers? Because we have similar equipment, but it's all handed on from the military. Or you didn't have to, didn't end up getting it.
I think they, they did get some money from Homeland Security for it, but those units from $1 million.
Yeah, that could be.
So, you know, you see things like that, you say, really? So.
Welcome to the committee.
Thank you. We really enjoyed it here and we're happy to be here.
Good.
And thank you for the time.
Way to get involved in less than a year. I love that.
New Zealand, mate. No, I'm Deloitte.
Alright. Thanks, Jimmy John.
Well, good evening. I know it's getting late. My name is- My address is 11727 10th Street, southwest in Byron. So we farm just south of Byron, raising four kids.
You're pretty brave, Bill.
I know. We're in Stewartville quite a bit, either at the pool or in athletic events and such. A lot of my customers farm around Stewartville, so I do have a seed agronomy supply business as well, called Purple Egg. And last call, Matt Flynn, as you all know, announced his retirement from the county board after a long and distinguished career. I took some time to think it over, and after some other encouragement from some of my neighbors and community leaders have decided to run for the fourth commissioner of district of Olmsted County. So that comes to Stewartville, Chatfield, Gilbert, Niota, as well as southern half of the world. So just wanted to introduce myself. I'm going to stick around after the meeting for those of you that have questions.
You've got some big shoes to fill.
Very big, yeah. Matt is a legend. For those of you that are newer to town, Matt's, Matt's a legend, so.
Yeah, this is hu, this is a huge election. I mean, I applaud you for stepping up because- Long time to talk to me, given my public safety background, and I'm like giving it some thought. There's a lot going on, man, and it's a big one.
So I was on the phone for an hour with Matt this morning. Uh, one of my neighbors, he's our PD investigator, my best friend from high school.
You're my friend by Jared, thank you.
I do, yeah. I'm just down the road from Jared, so Jared knows me well. Uh, my best friend from high school, uh, he's a special agent for U.S. Fish and Wildlife. He's, he's done border patrol. He was in retreat in 2005. Uh, so I understand a little bit about that. I think there's special needs. As Olmsted County grows, we're going to have a lot of things to consider, especially what you're talking about tonight. So it's going to require a very good city-county partnership. My commitment to all of you is to listen to each and every one of you with a left. And that's collective positions as well as non-collective positions, so it's very, very important. That partnership is key, as Jimmy John and I have talked about before. So my commitment to you, all of you, I'll hang around afterwards. Any questions from, from the council?
Alright, thank you, Bill.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to use the fourth line?
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn, please?
Wait a second, you got to let these guys say that. We have a motion, do you have a second? Do adjourn. We got a second for Jeremiah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the bulls?